This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the East Hampton City Council Public Safety Meeting. It's 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 27th. We are gathered here at 50 Payson Avenue in room number one. Present today is myself, Owen Zarrett, Councilor Riley, and President Councilor Gomez will be sitting in for Councilor Derby today. Just a couple of ground rules for folks who haven't attended these meetings before, I go over them every meeting. Also, similar to our full council meetings, if you'd like to speak, just please raise your hand. That's both to maintain order at meetings as well as so that the public knows who's speaking when you're recognized. There's no real limit to how much time you can speak, but certainly if you're speaking for a long time and there might be opportunities for other people, I might interrupt you and then I'll ask you to continue at future time. Public comment is public comment. The public is certainly welcome to give input, but we, there won't be any back and forth or conversations at deliberation with the public either, just like at our city council meetings. But otherwise, I welcome anyone to attend and I'm glad that you're all here. I don't think, this is our first meeting, right? So we don't have any minutes to approve. If there's any members of the public here to comment on any matters that aren't on our agenda, we'll be taking the fire department orderly report from Chief Norris, as well as discussing some new parking regulations put forward by a few of our colleagues. So, does anyone here want to speak about anything else? Great. Moving forward rapidly. Chief Norris, if you'd like to take the floor for your reports, which are always thorough and I look forward to them, go ahead. Let me just close the door here too.
So again, thank you to everyone. As you have gotten to know me over the years, I do look forward to these. I enjoy them. I think it's important that the city leaders continue to stay updated on all the departments across the city and certainly I look forward to kind of just updating you on what's going on in the fire and EMS organization. I'm excited to be here tonight because we actually have a number of initiatives for fire and EMS that are very exciting. The first one I want to walk through is the Insurance Service Organization Report. Over the last six months, we've had an independent outside agency, ISO, come and review all of our department records. And they typically come by each department across this country at least once every 10 years. And what they do is they look at really three broad categories. They look at fire department operations, they look at dispatch, and they look at your water system. And they basically take those three broad categories and then they give you a grading based on how well the community is prepared to respond and mitigate a fire emergency. And when I went back and looked at the East Hampton records, well over the last 30 years, East Hampton, the score is anywhere from 1 to 10. 1 is the best and 10 is the worst. 10 is the community has no fire department and 1 is the highest score you can get. When you go back and look at the records for East Hampton over the last 30 years, we were always no higher than a 5, which is acceptable. There's nothing wrong with that at all. And over the last few years, we've had the ability to increase some of our capabilities. We've increased our training capabilities. We brought up some new equipment. And when they came and looked at our ISO records this year, for the first time ever, they reclassified East Hampton from a score of a 5 on that 1 to 10 scale to a score of a 3. And that's pretty significant. And I try, as I try to educate the people throughout the community, certainly the city leaders, it's not only significant from jumping to points. Normally, people improve, they improve one point. So the jump two points is pretty significant. And also, I always share that it's easy for all of us. We certainly feel, rightfully so, that we have great organizations. To have an outside independent agency come in and really continue to validate that, I think that's pretty significant. I actually met with the representative from this company, this national recognized company, yesterday. And we had a conversation because when you look at that scale, we were actually only three points away from being a 2. And I share that with you for a couple of reasons. Number one, certainly going forward, that's our continual goal, is to get there. And we had a great conversation yesterday about talking about strategies to get those three points or more to get the ISO 2 rated. And it's pretty significant. I talked with different insurance agencies throughout the city, around the area. And I think definitively, again, you can say, this really quantifies and qualifies the department to state that we are better prepared to respond to an emergency now. And will it lessen people's homeowners insurance ratings? You can't definitively say that because different insurance agencies use this scale differently. But it's certainly not going to make it worse. And that's a great thing. But certainly on the fire department, we are truly proud to receive this rating. And we have a plan in place going forward, more importantly, to not only continue to maintain that record, but to also hopefully over the next 18 months to two years, get the city to a 2. In my personal opinion, we can, we'll be at a 2 in two years. So, and I did attach the full report and the agenda, I attached to the minutes for this meeting. So you have access to that full report as well. So that's the ISO report from the city.
Chief, actually, if you don't mind, if you have these great natural bullet points, do you mind if I kind of stop at each of these?
However you want. Yep, absolutely.
Does anyone have any questions about that at all? I don't know. We need buzzers.
Yeah, I mean, I guess maybe the question that I have specifically about going forward for the next year to get the rating from a 3 down to a 2, is there anything that the city government and city council can do to support the fire department to make that happen? Or is this just merely like a logistical and strategic planning that happens within your department?
I think it's fair to say it would be logistical and strategic planning that we continue to move down that path on. One of the topics I'll talk about in a minute is the SAFER grant that we received already. And talking with this individual yesterday, just by bringing on those four positions, one per shift, that in and of itself will continue to increase that points. We received a grant this past fall from the brush truck. The current brush truck is so old that it didn't have a built-in pump on it. We didn't get any points for that. The new brush truck that we received from a grant will add points to that. So I think going forward, just by some of the things that are being onboarded over the next year, when it comes around to having me requesting to come out, I think we can tighten it up and get us to that 2. And that would be the goal to maintain going forward. The reality is, we don't have the infrastructure to ever get to a 1. To have a 1, you have to have a fire station on every block. You'd have to have staff in that isn't reasonable for a city of East Hampton. We develop our staffing not only through the staffing on ship, but we also augment that with a paramedic aid for those larger search events. It's not practical for us to have 20, 25 people on duty. So, things like that will never be a 1. But 2 for our community is very good.
That's like our gold standard.
That's our gold standard. That's the best way to put it.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Councilor Gomez?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. What they look from bringing the points from 5 to 3 with a little bit more details, what exactly they look like, they look at the equipment, the personnel, all of that, and what we have to do to bring it to 2? What happened that we're not a 2?
What happened as to why we're not a 2? I think the big one is the staffing. And I think when you look at those broad categories, you have 100% score, of which 50% is the fire department, 40% is your water supply, 10% is your dispatch center. So by working on some of the staffing for fire or on those four positions that we have to the SAFER grant, by working with those other departments and tightening up some of those components, I think capturing those three points that we're short on right now should be relatively easy. And I thank you. But that's kind of my vision right now, is working, continue to work with those other two agencies and tighten up some of our operations and bring in onboard that staffing. And I think that's where we got the inner core. I think that's where our greatest efficiency was. Training, when I talked to them yesterday, our training has improved immensely over the years. And that certainly impacted the score a lot as well.
Any other questions?
So let's now kind of switch gears. We talked about fire. Let's go to the EMS side of the house now. So every year, the state fire public health comes in and they go through all of our ambulances as part of our ambulance license. And it gets renewed every year based on what they find. So they were in our station this past, I'm sorry, last Friday, 2:23. And they went through all of our ambulances. They went through our engines, which I'll talk about in more detail in a second. And they had zero deficiencies noted in our reports. And again, I share that with you for, again, two reasons. Number one, we always will tell, rightfully so, that we have the best service. Again, to have a separate independent agency come in and help validate that, again, I think it speeds volumes. And then the other thing, I want to make sure it doesn't go unrecognized, is our personnel. Our personnel, I told you last night in Worcester today at a conference, I've had the privilege to see departments across the country, across the state. We are very blessed with the resources and the best resources of our people. And I think that inspection report is a reflection of the work they do and the diligent care they put into going through all the equipment, checking expiration dates on all the medications, cleaning, caring for all that equipment. That is reflective in that report right there on our personnel. And that can't go unrecognized. So very proud of that report and very proud of our personnel having the state come in last week and basically give us that gold standard check mark. And then along with that, if you look at the last bullet point there, EFR, paramedic engine. So EFR is Emergency First Response Vehicle. What we implemented just this past January, we've had the vision and kind of the initiative over the last year, and we executed it in January, was we now have our first new engine equipped with paramedic gear. That's significant in two areas. Number one, if we go to a fire tonight, and I hope we don't, but if we go to a fire tonight and Engine 1 and Engine 2 from East Hampton arrive on scene first, and we're still waiting for mutual aid to come, if someone gets injured on that fire ground within the first five minutes, we had all these paramedics there that were trained, but we didn't provide them the equipment or resources to actually do anything to their scope of training. So now, we provided the highest level possible pre-hospitality on the engine. So if someone gets hurt, they can care for them immediately. And then in our day-to-day operations, the EMS calls are continuing to increase. It's the nature of our profession. And when we have to call on mutual aid, if our three ambulances are out already tied up on calls, and we have a fourth call come in, the engine will go with people who are left back at the station. And they wait for North Hampton to come over, which should be anywhere from eight to 10 minutes from where they are. They, our people now have the ability to have the highest level of care pre-hospitality to give to that patient with that paramedic gear on the engine. So when the state came in, they inspected that engine. They inspected it for the first time. And again, it was met by the gold standard. Everything's all set. And we're off and running with that. And we've used it more than a handful of times now for mutual aid calls coming in. The last thing I'll share with that before there's questions or comments about anything with this category is one of the biggest expenditures when you do a project like a paramedic engine is the cardiac monitors. To give you an idea, we're in the process of writing a grant right now to replace our monitors. The new cardiac monitors are $75,000 apiece. What we did with that paramedic engine, because we needed a cardiac monitor, when we renegotiated the contract with West Hampton, which is a three-year deal, part of that renewal, they had a cardiac monitor out there that they no longer needed. We had it serviced, we had it inspected, it was all set, ready to go. We, as part of that renegotiation, took ownership of that cardiac monitor. We sat one on our engine, what I'll say, for free, based on that renegotiation and service provided out there. So in terms of costs associated with getting this outfitted with paramedic gear, it was really minimal based on that part of it as well. So I'll pause there and certainly answer any questions that I did clear for EMS.
Any questions? Chief, so the staffing on the engine doesn't change. Is that correct? Or do you have an additional person on the engine now as a paramedic engine?
It's always variable. You can have, so like right now, we have three ambulances. Right now, one of them is down in Connecticut getting some warranty work done. So we have two ambulances right now. So if I have seven people on ship today, each, there's four shifts, each shift has seven people, and we'll drop down to five. If there's seven on duty today, let's say the two ambulances go out, so I lose four people, I've got three people back. If a third call comes in tonight, those three respond on the engine, and they can start the highest level of care pre-hospitality at that paramedic level while waiting for North Hampton to come over. If I had six people on today, only two people would be on that engine. If I had five people on today, minimum, I'd have possibly one person. So that's why I say it's variable based on the staffing for the day.
And do you have to adjust any of your policies and procedures to accommodate for the fact that the engine's typically going to fight a fire and you expect the ambulance to come to provide paramedic care, but now you have a vehicle that can provide both in terms of having to make logistical choices?
We did. So in CMR 170 outlines all the state regulations for these EFRs at the paramedic level. So when they came in, when the state came in and reviewed our ambulance license, they had to see those policies that were updated to meet that regulation. And just to give you an example, if we have three people on that engine tonight and North Hampton's coming over mutual aid, they go to the call, they start care. If a call came in for a structured fire, we can leave one person there because otherwise it would be abandonment. So one person can stay there with the paramedic gear while the other two leave to go to initiate a fire attack. So we have some flexibility, I think, if I understand your question correctly.
Great. Anything else?
Honestly, it's just, it's just a compliment to pass on to your team.
Questions only.
Last year, I visited some of your EMTs, and they walked me through basically like a shift change was happening. And looking at all of the things that are checked and all of the procedures and all of the equipment that exists, and to see that there are zero deficiencies on a report like that is remarkable. I don't, I just can't process how much attention to detail goes into that. So I just wanted to say that to you to pass on to your team that it's, it's an incredible achievement.
No, I certainly appreciate that, and I will absolutely pass that on. And I think one of my final comments on these two first categories will always be that when you look at fire and EMS, when people call 911, they expect the best service. And the best analogy I can give you is, you know, if you're, if you have some work done that needs to be done in your home, you have the ability to call numerous different contractors and get quotes and prices. And you can choose kind of what you want for that level of service. When you call 911, you don't get a choice. You get what you get. And I share that with you because as the department head, my expectation is the community receives that best possible service because they have no other choice. It's not acceptable for a pickup truck with bandages to show up. They better get the best trained personnel and the best equipment available for their emergency. And that's the best analogy that I always share with people is you call 911, you don't have a choice. You get what you get, and it better be the best.
All right, moving on, grants.
Grants. I love talking about grants. Let's start with the SAFER grant. So again, I don't remember, as I've made my way around to different committees throughout the city here, we received back in September, a SAFER grant. And that SAFER grant is for adding staffing to your organization. So with the mayor's support, we applied for four additional new firefighters that would add one per shift. I just mentioned earlier, we currently have seven firefighters per shift. This would give us eight firefighters per shift. That grant was for 1.5 million. It provides funding for the salary and benefits of these four positions for the first three years. So the new civil service list will come out March 15th. We go up the state hiring list. That new list should be certified and available to us to start the hiring process, March 15th. So we'll start working towards that at that time. So that was the first one. The one, again, that I mentioned, I was excited to come here and kind of have this conversation tonight. The mayor and I just received notification just last week, in the last week. We've had some challenges in our organization with fire inspections. We have one full-time inspector, Captain Constantine. And when you look at the demand being placed on fire inspections, it's gotten a much more demanding. And in particular, it is the photovoltaic systems, the energy storage systems that are becoming more and more common out there. And just to give you an example, we're averaging right now about 30 per month just with these new solar systems going on residential commercials, occupancies. So Dan has to not only review all those plans before they can install them, once they're installed, he then has to go out and inspect them, make sure they comply with the state laws. So we've struggled. And you know, the other thing I share with people is in terms of redundancies and having backups, we really had a weakness in that area. And I've talked to people about COVID. And I say, no COVID, there was a lot of bad things with COVID, but there were a lot of good things. And one of them was it exposed one of our weaknesses. And one of our weaknesses was not having that redundancy in this fire inspection area. So we applied for a state community compact regionalization grant. And we have been awarded that for $131,000. And we actually partnered up with the town of South Hampton. And we put forward a grant application for a regional shared fire inspection position. That inspection, that position will be fully funded with salary and benefits and some equipment for that first year. And then going forward, the communities can develop an MLU to cost share that position going forward. So we're very excited about that. That certainly will fill a gap in our organization. And to have that seed money to get this program going will be huge for both communities. So again, when I looked at hiring for that position, that will be a fifth position coming off that civil service list in March. And all five positions will be fully funded from those grant opportunities. Another one that we just received notice on last week was the pre-hospital trauma life support, the PHGLS grant that we applied for over $30,000. One of the challenges that the mayor and I have always talked about, one of the goals is to continue to have East Hampton as a regional leader. And with that, East Hampton Fire is the host. We applied for a regional training grant. And this grant is for $30,000 to train 60 people through Hampshire County to this level. This PHGLS level, this pre-hospital trauma life support level, is a great program because one of our initiatives over the last year, two years, was to bring people up to the training level needed for active shooters. This state, as an entire state, adopted NPA 3000, which sets the training standards for active shooters. Well, now that we've kind of met that, now we need to have, make sure our medical people are trained so they know how to deal with potentially people in these situations. So that first class will be hosted in East Hampton April 24th and 25th. And then the second class will be in September at some point, age will be determined. So we're excited about that. The emergency management preparedness grant for $4,600. With that, we are in the process of purchasing a drone. And again, I made comments about the fire inspections and in particular, the photovoltaic systems. And I talked about how we have to inspect those. I want to make sure our people remain as safe as possible. Instead of having them go up on roofs, we've applied for, received funding for this drone. With that, this money comes from EMA. And we had to put forward policies to ensure that the operation use of the drone was not in violation of any privacy. So they're reviewing all of those policies right now to make sure it complies with all of those home security directives. But once we get their approval, we'll be moving forward. And the main purpose of that drone will be for fire inspections and really those photovoltaic systems that are two to three stories up in the air. Equipment grant from the state, we just received about two weeks ago, $14,100 for the purchase of new protective clothing. And again, just to give you an idea, to fully outfit someone right now with pants, coat, helmet, boots, gloves, and a hood, it's on average right now around $5,500. So we'll have just under the ability to purchase just one of three sets of full turnout gear for that. And then the last one we're just waiting on, that's still pending out there, is $8,100 for our SAFE and Senior SAFE programs. That's for the training in the schools, the elementary schools. Kyle Galloway does a wonderful job with that, working and partnering with the East Hampton school system. And then we have numerous individuals who work with the East Hampton Senior Center and doing numerous programs, whether it's smoke detector installations, carbon dioxide, fire extinguishers, all of those. So so far in 2024, we've been very fortunate. And we've obtained $187,000 in grants so far in 2024. So we're excited about that. And certainly, we'll continue to always look at kind of what our priorities are for the city, our department, and see what other alternative funding sources are out there and how we meet those priorities. So I'll pause there on grants.
Questions?
Just one.
Okay.
All right. So for the equipment grant, so you know, over the last few years, I've done research on what it means to have brand-new protective clothing. And one of the things that I learned was that the rates of contracting some form of cancer go up significantly when the equipment is really old because they're just functionally covered in carcinogens. So now that we can basically purchase at least three more sets of protective clothing, how much more do you think we need in order to make sure that everything is brand-new? And I know that this is obviously like an ideal, like if you could buy everything you wanted, sure. And I know that that's not realistic, but where are we at with that?
No, that's a great question. I thank you for that. Certainly, this is one of our passions is the safety of our personnel is number one. And with that, we put together a plan four years ago. One of the goals across this country in the fire service is to provide every employee with two sets of turnout gear. The reason they watch it have two sets of turnout gear is kind of what you alluded to is they want you to be cleaning that protective clothing on a regular basis. You have to take it apart. We have two washer extractors at the station that they can do that. And then it has to sit and dry for a while. So it takes anywhere from four to seven days. So during that four to seven days, you can't say that, you can't, you have to keep them working, make sure where the second set comes in. And if you have a more dangerous situation where the gear gets saturated and contaminated, you have to send that up to a contractor service that could take upwards of 30 days. So I think the first part to your question is, with our plan four years ago, we probably need about, and I'm guessing, around 10 more sets of gear to get everyone two sets of gear. One of my goals with this one, this money will be partially used to outfit the new employees. That I talked, those five new employees, that will get partial funding for the gear.
Okay.
When I talk a minute about our supplemental going into the end of this year, part of that supplemental will be to go towards that grant.
Okay.
The supplemental to get all five people fully outfitted. And then with the cancer and everything, we have the two washer extractors at our station. We're working on two sets of gear. We have policies in place for cleaning, maintaining, and checking the gear. And then the state, through the Department of Fire Services, has a great program for all firefighters across the state. They can get free skin checks and cancer checks. Excuse me. I'll share with everyone, I'm proud. One of the things they provide also is free ultrasounds for firefighters. And I'm proud to say I actually have one scheduled at Mercy Medical Center this Friday at 9:00 AM. So I'm trying to lead by example.
Yep.
These resources are out there. We want to make sure our people are safe, and the state is certainly stepping up to provide services as well. So I hope I answered your question.
Yeah. Perfect. Yep.
I have a few questions. The first one is, we're going to have a new for firefighters with this grant. If this grant may have a requirement, we have to keep the same level of personnel at the fire station? So because the last one that we have, I think we have a window of six months, I think was it?
Yep.
To replace it. Is it similar?
It's similar. So in terms of timelines for hiring, from the time that you're awarded the grant to the time you can start drawing down the funding, they say they want you to start drawing it down within a six-month window. That six-month window gives you the time to start the hiring process.
Okay.
We're going to be a couple of months behind the eight ball because we hire off the state's civil service list. That civil service list won't be certified until March 15th. So if I had my way, I would have started hiring a few months ago. I can't, my hands are tied because of that state list, and they have to certify it first. But certainly, we'll get going on that on March 15th. And then during that three-year timeframe, the city agrees to maintain and not lay off any firefighters. So that will bring us up to 36 positions at the time the grant was submitted. And we have to maintain a minimum of 36 people for that three-year period.
Oh, you have another one?
Yes. I have to, one more, but I'm going to try to.
Sure. I was sort of a follow-up to yours, yeah.
I mean, you can do that.
No, please.
So the budget season is coming soon, and this is going to be related to that. So for the new regional fire inspector, this money will cover his or her salary.
Correct. Yes.
Then we have to provide transportation for that person, and attached to the money, I'm glad that the fire department is going to get a drone. But that means that someone has to be trained, and if that has to be trained, that we have to pay more because that person does have different skills than the other ones?
No. So Captain Constantine is currently going through the training required to utilize their drone. He's already actively doing that.
Okay.
So we'll have the capability, once he completes that training, to run that drone. That was one of the questions that FEMA asked us as well.
Okay.
Is, do we currently have anyone trained to the FAA standards to operate the drone?
And before you answer about the transportation, just for the public, because probably some people out there will make this question. Why we can't use the police department drones?
Uh, the police, yeah. So the amount of times that we're going to be using this is literally on a daily basis. So number one, in terms of frequency and needed use, it's going to be a lot because, as I mentioned, we're getting 30 photovoltaic systems a day coming in. And then with the police department, they're using theirs also as kind of like a regional asset. So in terms of how they're using theirs and the overlap, I think it's much needed for this community.
I think just importantly.
That's a great question.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the transportation for the.
So with the transportation, I had a very good conversation with the mayor. When we put this grant forward, when you put in for one of these state grants, the cap is $20,000. So when I wrote the grant, we also put in, I emailed the state and asked permission if a vehicle was an eligible expense for this grant, and they said yes, it was. And then when we got correspondence back from them last week, they asked, would we consider accepting the grant without the vehicle? So we didn't want to turn any grant money down.
Right.
So the mayor's working on a plan going forward. She understands the need that this position, it needs a vehicle.
Of course.
Because now you're traveling throughout the entire square air mileage of two communities, how they're doing inspections. So as much as I was excited about the grant, I was a little bit, I don't want to say discouraged, but at least I think for this committee and the public, it is important to understand that that originally was requested. And I think the state, rightfully so, is trying to divvy up the funds to a lot of communities, and that's why it got caught.
Thank you.
So with the cost per outfit for protective clothing and the slight difference between how much three uniforms it actually costs versus how much you got in the grant, if we saw a firefighter in town like without boots on, would that explain why? No kidding. So with, so grants are always great to fund things like vehicles and like single-cost items, but it always gets tricky when they're funding positions.
Yep.
And so is there, there's a, I mean, we've been doing these SAFER grants for a while. So there's a plan in place, obviously, that this will dovetail nicely with the budget to continue to pay for these going forward.
Yeah. So I'll share in terms of my vision. I'll talk our organizational vision. Excuse me. Our organizational vision is, when I came into the department back three and a half, four years ago, one of the things we looked at was EMS system. And very quickly, we have the ability to get reimbursed for patients that are transported through the ambulance or the insurance companies. Those rates have not been changed since 2013. So we adjusted them slightly to bring them more in line with the regional fees charged by other services. That was done in November of 2021. A good, a good management tool is to reevaluate, reevaluate your rates every two years. So we should have done that and made an adjustment back this fall, this past November. We purposely did not do that because what my vision and suggestion to the city leaders would be is freeze your rates for the next three years, and then three months before the SAFER grant ends, then readjust your rates. That way, there, they will not have been adjusted since 2021, which is two years ago, add three years. I'm going to now make up a five-year difference in my adjustment to the industry norm in the region, which will more than likely offset the need to maintain, sustain that, and not hit the tax base of the community hardly at all, if at all.
Great.
So that's my vision. That's my suggestion to city leaders. How that plays forward will be an ongoing conversation. But that's kind of what we've done to help offset that.
That's great. Thanks. Anything else on this topic?
I just have a quick question to tell one of Councillor Gomez's comments. With that fire inspection position being shared, position with us in Southampton, is that, can the cost for transportation for that position be a shared cost also with Southampton? Is that something that's going to be explored?
It can be dependent. That will be explored. That will be explored going forward. Yes. And then in terms, just very quickly, in terms of sustainability and how that's going to work as well. Again, we have the ability, when we do the inspection, we collect fees. So again, I'm going to start looking at those. How can we manage those fees between both communities? Collect that revenue, see what is remaining, and then provide that shared cost going forward. But again, if done appropriately, we can actually keep the costs reasonable to maintain that position in terms. Because again, sustainability is always an important part. Create added positions. But you want to keep those, right? Because you need them for a reason in the first place. We can't lose them. So.
Anything else? Moving forward, the budget.
So on the back, just very briefly, for the FY24 budget, I submitted, as requested by all department heads, the mayor and her financial team, our end-of-year supplemental requests. There's one submitted for fire, one for EMS, and then a separate one for the grants. With the fire one, I think the biggest ones that I'm looking at are the end-of-year service on all the equipment. The hose testing the ladder, the air toughener extinguishers, SCBA is an explanation equipment. I do want to be clear that when we had the budget conversations last year with the mayor and her financial team, they did increase that line item to initially fund these services. But I had to actually spend that money that was initially budgeted for that because unfortunately, there was a lot of unanticipated expenditures. The most recent ones I'll share with you is our CAR4, which is a support vehicle. That blew a piston on it, even the engine job of $2,500. The remote control on the aerial ladder, the control panel went, that was $1,800. The front end on A1 needs some work, that was $1,800. All of that, none of that was budgeted because if people have suggestions as to how to plan for that, I'm certainly open to ideas. So the money that was initially budgeted for the service, I spent because I had to keep that equipment in service. So that's why I just want to, again, in terms of, there's no surprises, and you know, people talk about being open and transparent. Well, here it is. But I mean, we're in good shape. Overtime is always a question. Part of that supplemental is overtime. And again, when you look at overtime, we always average anywhere, due back to the last five years, anywhere between $220,000, $240,000 a year for overtime. And this year, we got hit hard early in the year with injuries and failing medical leave. So two things that we did to really kind of minimize that impact on overtime for internal controls. Number one, we had two people lined up to go to the academy back in October or November. I actually deferred those two positions to keep them on shift in order to not create two more vacancies from sending them training. So they actually were assigned training in January, not back in the fall time. Because at the same time, while those injuries were going on, I had a couple of failed medical leave. So they came back in December, those that were out at that time. So when I sent the people in January to training, I didn't have so many vacancies. Then the other one that we always have been doing is our training officer position. When we designed and implemented that training officer position, it was understood that not only would it be for training purposes, but it would be helpful to offset the overtime during the days for captains. So if a captain is out on the day tour and a training captain is in, that person, instead of hiring overtime, will work that day tour. So over the course of the year, just to give everyone an idea, that saves anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 a year in overtime by having that ability. So certainly, in terms of internal controls, we're always looking at ways to manage that overtime. So. And then for the FY25 budget, I've met once with the mayor and her financial team, and we're just currently in the process of crafting it. It's still early on. So we're still crafting that budget and working with the mayor on that. So. So this is kind of a brief update as to where we're at for going into the end of this year, and some of the reasons that lead to those supplementals. I'm sorry, the last one, I didn't touch on it, is there was a third one about the grants. The grants for the SCBA, the air compressor, the brush truck, and the LED sign, which includes smoke and CO detector installation program. Those four grants that we received last year all require matched amounts. So until we can move forward with that matched amount, I'm in a holding pattern for that. So that third supplemental request, you'll see as part of the package as well.
Questions? Chief, I don't know if you can comment on this, but I ask you this all the time, and, excuse me. One thing that always comes up with these unforeseen expenses that have directly occurred from basically doing your job, like operating vehicles and having firefighters working, is the fact that because of the work you do, you bring in 1.2-ish million dollars in EMS fees. Is there any, has any, has there been any advancements made in like a revolving fund of any sort to either accommodate for, you know, personnel expenses that are incurred from overtime and/or material needs for services and things like that?
There has been. We've had ongoing conversations about different philosophies. I grew up in a philosophy where we had a revolving account. So the money came back to this dedicated account, and then that fund was used to offset the operations of the service. And then I worked on other systems where all the funding goes into a general fund, and then it's just a portion based on your demonstrated and demonstrated need. I think in terms of what's best for East Hampton, you know, what's the best answer? I like the system that the money comes back to the general fund with the support of the city leadership, understanding that there's a cost to providing the service, which then leads to that revenue generation, if that makes sense. The mayor and her financial team, they have, you know, been very good in examining what the true cost is. The best example I can give you is EMS supplies. Prior to COVID, it's unfortunate, it's almost a shame, the cost of a box of gloves was maybe $100. That box of gloves nowadays is $300. It's frustrating for everyone. So, you know, working with the mayor and her team, they've made good adjustments to help me come closer to that truer need of delivering that service. So I think when you start developing revolving accounts or enterprise accounts, I think some people start to believe that that revenue should provide the funding for the full service. You can't do that with emergency services because if you blow an engine on an ambulance, you're talking $10,000 that is now taken, you know. So I always phrase with people that if you set up those revolving accounts for emergency services, yes, that money will be used to offset the cost to run that service, but it most likely won't fully cover the cost for that. But again, not to be long-winded, but I think the city, through these types of forums, through ongoing education, I think people are better understanding what's needed to fund the operational expenses to deliver that best possible service. And that is the only belief I have is, I tell everyone, I don't care what service it is, but it better be the best service I would provide.
Anything else? Personnel update?
Personnel. So again, just we're beginning a process of hiring five people on March 15th. I outlined the reasons as to why, and where that funding's coming from. We've got one firefighter currently completing paramount training at GCC. That's going very well. We've got one firefighter currently at Fire Academy in Springfield right now. His graduation date is April 4th down in Springfield. Two on IOD, so one of those on IOD actually got hurt down at the academy. I had, I mentioned, I had them lined up the two spots in the fall time. I deferred to January. Within the first month of training, he ended up getting hurt. So I have one on long-term, which is estimated six months, and then one on short-term, which is one month. And then I have one right now in clinical leave for the birth of a child. So that's just a quick update in terms of kind of personnel. And I always share that with the city leadership because those do affect your overtime. When I have a contractual obligation to maintain a minimum of five people, these impacts, if I've got seven on a shift and I take away some for those reasons, it does impact it. So that's why I always like just keep the city leadership in a loop on that.
Anything on that? And then moving on to your.
And then lastly, I always like ending with department programs. As much as we sit here and talk about the emergency services provided, I'm very proud of our organizational personnel for those non-emergency services. Through preventative efforts, through outreach and education, you certainly can do a lot of huge benefits out there. of huge benefits out there. So just to remind you, car seat installations. I actually came back from the conference today, I was walking to the station, and one of the personnel on duty today was installing two car seats just today in the base of the fire station. Last year, without having to inject, we installed over 50 car seats last year. We got a grant for free car seats that we're still looking and trying to give away to community members who can't afford that. They're expensive. You know, you're talking anywhere from 150, 250 dollars for a car seat. So we're very excited about that. It can be complex, and if we can minimize injuries in these minors, these children, by having a properly started car or car seat, then we certainly have done our job. Fire safety training, the council and agents have been great partnering with that group there, doing community-wide fire safety training. We haven't done anything over the winter time because of the weather, but we're looking forward to get that program back and running another month or so. Winter Fest, what a great time. You know, again, I love talking vision, and, you know, there's always some great ideas, and there's some ideas that don't work out, and okay, nobody's able to stop and react away and do something different, but. So this year, we did the Polar Pudge. And I got to tell you, I was a little bit nervous about it, not sure how it was going to go, because I never done it. It was phenomenal. We had such great support, we had great engagement with that, and more so than anything, we had people requesting it to be back next year. There was over 100 people most of the time watching the entire event. We had over 85 participants. We have some great ideas to work with the Winter Fest team, go to the next year, so we're very excited about that. I mentioned the East Hampton schools with the SAFE program that Kyle Gagren does. And then I've got three or four people with the upcoming job fair they're going to have at the East Hampton High School, I believe it's like March 21st. I believe that's coming, so people go onto that. I talked about the senior center programs, the smoke detector, common ice detector programs that we do with them. We've been continuing to do CPR and AED training programs. Captain Matt Sandler coordinates this, we're doing at least two trainings a month. Again, we're working with the schools to make sure their people get a priority, continue to train, and we're also doing community programs. And then the other one there is community first aid programs, and, you know, getting that education out in the community as well. So I always like to end with that and just kind of give a different lens as to, we're not just a response agency. I like to think that our personnel take a very progressive stance and initiative, and that's just a quick snapshot at some of the programs they're doing. So I'll kind of pause there to see if people have questions about that topic.
Anything? I just wanted to thank you for, I think, you know, doing what we do as counselors, and certainly I think also what you do as city department, a lot of times, it can be really tedious and not fun, you know, and, but that Polar Pudge, just having people out there, just, you know, having fun and not arguing about anything. It was this very kind of wholesome New England experience, a bunch of random people just getting ready to get in the water on the side of a hill, and, you know, having, you're all supporting it, and the search team, and everyone there watching or participating. There was something really nice about that, and I appreciate, you know, all that your department did to certainly take it seriously, to make it a safe experience, but also to make it, just to make it happen. So I appreciate that, I just wanted to say that. We'll work on the hot tub for next year.
Exactly.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I just have something quick I want to say, I just want to compliment you, because, you know, one thing that sticks in my mind, what you said earlier in your presentation is, you don't care what service you're providing, you want to provide the best service. And as much as that should be common sense, it's not. And I just really admire that mindset and that leadership that you have in your department, and I just wanted to say that.
No, no, I appreciate that, and to say a thing, you know, I'll end on the city, I love working for the city and this organization, and having these conversations, and just trying to reinforce that this community deserves the absolute best. And again, it's easy for us to say we have the best. I think it's being validated by the recent inspections we've had, the support from all the city leadership, and when they call 911, it's no longer acceptable for a pickup truck and bandages to show up. That will never happen under my leadership. We have incredible people, and I'm proud to do their job, and I appreciate all the support from all of you. And I think one of the last things I'll say is, I want to have conversations with President Gomez about with the new members of the city council, maybe doing another night over at the fire station, and doing some different stations, and having people just put their hands on some of their gear, go understand, you know, we talk about turnout here, and I can easily say to you, it's 600,000 dollars. Come to the station, hold it, see it, and I can put a price tag on it for you. This coat's 2,200 dollars, this panel, this helmet here is 450 dollars. These EMS cables that you check a pulse ox, pulse ox telemetry reading with, that's a thousand dollars in my hand. All those things, I think, are tangible things, that's very valuable to the city leadership to understand, and we can maybe have a conversation, I'm looking at dates, when it gets warmer out, to open the station doors and do stuff like that. But I think that was a great, it was a great time when we did it two years ago, the last time.
Yeah.
It was two years ago. So we'll have more conversations about that, so.
Great, looking forward to it. Yeah, to echo my colleagues' remarks, always appreciate you coming out at 6:00 PM to chat with us. These are always well put together, well presented, I appreciate all the hard work that you put in, but also, you know, what's come of it, which is success. You know, you're not just invested in doing a job, you are doing a job, so that's very much appreciated.
I think the investments the city's made over the last three and a half years is reflective in all of these reports that are now coming forward. So, and then certainly, if anything ever, if you need information for anything, by all means, track me down, and we'll get to this soon as we can, so never be an issue.
Right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you all.
Of course, take care.
All right. So next on the agenda are some traffic items that are related to each other, so I'm sorry, I have to switch back over, agenda packet, that were brought forward by Councilors Gomez, Terrell, and Denham, both regarding no parking areas, but also some amendments to the actual violations, if I'm correct, but I'll learn more in a second because we have two out of three of the sponsors here. So do either of you, Councilor Terrell, or?
For him, I just want to say that we don't have Councilor Denham because she's in another need.
I'm aware. Oh, yes, yes. Yes, she's downstairs working very hard with the other members of the ordinance committee and planning, yes, yes, I'm aware of that, yeah. So do either of you want to go first? Councilor Terrell?
I guess I'm going to go first. I'll speak about the parking fines. We had met with Chief Alberi and a few others out of the police department, just discussed the current situation of the parking tickets in town, the cost of the tickets, tickets written, and we thought as conglomerate that it would be a good idea to raise the parking fines. Not for, I want to make it clear, it was not a revenue-driven decision. We're not looking to nickel and dime John Q. Public because he or she parks illegally. With the cost of what the parking fines were, it did not seem as a deterrent. It had been a very long time since the parking fines had been readdressed, and we felt that the current cost of the fines, which I believe was 20 dollars, is not a deterrent. That's, you can pay that to park in a parking garage, you know, in larger cities. And we just felt as though, for the safety of the community, for the pedestrians, for the consumers walking around the city, that we needed to beef up, for lack of better words, these fines to try to deter the constant illegal parking within the city. So we had proposed bumping those fines up from 20 dollars to 50 dollars. Across the board, the handicap going, I believe, from 50 dollars to 250 dollars, because that is also a ticket that is frequently ridden, is people violating that parking handicap spot when they are not, when they should not be parking in a handicap spot. And we still found, we found that that 250, I believe, is still a little bit lower than the state average, which I believe was through about 300, 350 dollars for a similar fine in other communities. So like I said, I can't stress enough that this was safety-driven, this was not revenue-driven. And I know I repeated myself, but I just want to be clear on that because I don't want people to think, like I said, we're trying to nickel and dime and get extra money by giving residents extra tickets. That's not what it's about, it's about safety of our residents.
So, oh, okay, go ahead, Councilor Gomez.
I'd add a few things to what I said. For the good reason, a lot of people are these things, these things happen, right? You see Cottage Street, Union, and especially Main Street, and starting probably Wednesday, even today probably is packed, already packed. That is not foraging, because I think it's a way to find parking in the area, but some people are taking it in a way like, you know what, I couldn't find a really close parking to this particular business, I'm going to park anywhere I want. And I think 20 dollars now, maybe 20 dollars for some people, it would be a lot of, it's a lot of money, but for other people, 20 bucks, if I could spend 300 dollars in a business, 20 bucks, it's okay. I will pay for that. So to, and it's a safety, and I'm going to echo it, echo what Councilor Terrell said, it's more about safety. If you go to Union Street, and you see that many cars, some even for people that are driving, it's really hard to see pedestrians. Same with Cottage Street, it's really hard to see pedestrians or getting out on intersections, so it's really hard to get out because people are illegal parking in some areas. And this is the reason we want to propose to increase it. We put 50 as a starting point.
Okay.
Don't necessarily have to be 50, could be less, or be more, but that's a starting point that we want to be forward. Definitely, we want to increase it, because I think that will force some people not to park there in some areas, and that's the reason we are doing this. About the other requests is, basically, it's two parking spots in the city that you are not allowed to park anytime except Sundays. One of them, the most interesting one that I probably will find is the one in Union Street, they no more park there because it would be really problematic, but the sign's still there. People are still allowed to park there on Sundays. I guess probably a long time ago makes sense, because maybe the church people have to park there, but now they have a parking lot. They have enough parking for the people who's going to the church. They don't utilize that section, especially, I think, is a really, is a safety, safety issue that we should avoid. We had a conversation with the police department about that particular area, and they recommend to do a no parking area permanently.
Is that on the opposite side from Big E's, from the intersection of Union down a little bit?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. And where are these other two places on Main Street?
That is, if, if I recall, well, that is near the-
I think one of the spots is directly across the street.
The barber, right?
Yes, yes, from the barber there.
On Main?
Yes.
Yes, Watkins Walken. Well, that's the only reason, that's the only way I can remember it, it's just Watkins, Christopher Watkins, right?
They have the same.
Yeah, so just to, and you're, and just to clarify, the recommendation is just make them go park all the time? Okay, sure, I mean, all right, and that's mostly just for safety?
Those are the things, yeah.
Especially, yeah, okay. The way, I'm just trying to read this too, so the traffic, the parking fines, so you have these highlighted yellow areas, and I think, did you, the areas that you highlighted, are those the existing fines, or was that what you meant, or did those retyped to increase them? Because in the cover letter, you make a recommendation to increase regular no parking-
In the language I'm preaching, we include every single place that we're going to do.
Okay. Oh, is that what you mean? That you just highlighted it to show where it appears, but then it will be increased?
Correct.
And these numbers will increase to what you recommended in the cover letter? Okay, I was trying to, okay, that makes sense. All right, any comments?
Just that I know, I've been working with folks from the Commission on Disability for months now, trying to address this issue of people who are not respecting handicap parking spots. So I know, in addition to that, they also, last year, gave us a presentation that talked about concerns with traffic infrastructure. So, you know, do I like increasing penalties against people? No. But it has been clear from the advocates who are saying, people are taking parking spots from us, and we can't get around. And, you know, I think this is, it's also, in addition to being a deterrent, I think this is also a value statement that we believe that people with disabilities and mobility issues deserve to have fair and just parking. So I think this is really great.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one can make the argument that there are times where you park somewhere and you get a ticket because you went overtime or something like that, or like you were quickly running in to grab something and parked somewhere you weren't supposed to park, and then you get a ticket in and you were wrong place, wrong time, or... But, you know, parking in a handicap space, if you're not, if you shouldn't be, it should be a non-starter. I mean, there's people with, who are differently abled, who need those spaces because they have a variety of issues that require them to park as close as possible to places of business or even their homes to get in and out. So, yeah, I mean, I don't have an issue raising that to whatever you recommend, and if 200 dollars is what you fell on, you won't get an argument from me. If the standard that you arrived at for the other non-parking issues is 50, if that's batches up with other places, then I think, you know, we should just get with the times. It's interesting to me that there's, so there's a code specifically for a handicap space, and then there's another code, and that's currently 50 dollars, recommending the rate up to 200. There's another code for restricted place slash handicap space that's under the regular fine, and I'd be curious when we get the police chief in here, just to understand what the distinction is there. Yeah. I mean, I don't have an issue with this. Again, it's not about revenue, it's about, I think, bringing us more up to date with where things are, as well as a deterrent, and I think the deterrent specifically is with the handicap part. And if there's spaces in town where we really shouldn't have people parking in general, and we're behind the times on that, you know, this was informed clearly by stakeholders who know what they're talking about. I really have no issues with it. Like I had said previously, I just want to be able to have a conversation with the chief, and that's just in like a couple weeks, so, Councilor Riley?
Yeah, so just a clerical question. I thought when we were talking before that the increase would go from 50 to 250, it's 50 to 200, is that correct?
A handicap.
Yes, 200.
I was about, yeah, I said 250, that was me.
Okay, no worries, yep, I just wanted to make sure that the record was correct.
Well, there's probably, their state probably has its own limit too, right?
It's 500.
Oh, really?
We saw a few municipal that's at 350.
Yep. Well, I mean, we can start there, right? If it doesn't, it's, the option is there.
I echo what Councilor Zerrin said, there really is no excuse for that one particular instance, there really is no excuse at all.
Yeah.
And again, the number is just a starting point. If the committee decides to increase it, we increase it. You guys believe that we have to reduce it, we reduce it, but that's a starting point, and I agree with you, something that we shouldn't be doing at all is parking in a handicap space.
Yeah, and the other thing is that the reality in East Hamptons are very lucky because parking is generally free and mostly abundant, and so it's really hard to get a parking ticket here unless you're basically doing something offensive like parking in, like, I remember a few years ago, I talked to the chief of police because someone decided to try to pull their motorcycle up in front of a business like Cottage, and felt that their motorcycle was so precious that they parked them along between two spaces, because God forbid, someone, you know, they need all the space they can get, you know. But, yeah, so it's really hard to get a parking ticket here. So- So I think if someone's parking in a way that actually is bringing our, and I'd be curious to ask the chief too, like, how many tickets are they actually writing for regular things? So, you know, you're probably doing something wrong and potentially, you know, with intention if you get a parking ticket in East Hampton. So I don't have an issue with any of this, thanks for bringing it forward. I mean, again, like just for due diligence, we'll just talk to the chief unless Councilor Riley has any concerns.
No, I think that, I think that's fine. So we would just basically finalize the process with him and then when we have that conversation, we would just make the motion to bring it to city council at that point?
Yeah, I think I, just from the timing, I think what my hope would be is assuming that there's no issues, it doesn't sound like there would be the, it would be the first meeting, I would, it would, the timeline would be such, hopefully the public hearing set for the first meeting in April.
Okay.
I mean, theoretically pending the chief's input, we could set it for the second one in March, but I, I mean, like unless, yeah, I just, that way I have to report it out to the council. Just out of curiosity, what is, like in Northampton, what's a parking ticket now for like just a regular D and O?
We discussed it when we met with the chief, but I don't remember off the top of my head. We thought we were pretty fifty and two hundred were pretty consistent.
Okay.
Surrounding areas.
Yeah, sounds fair.
Yep.
All right, do either of the sponsors have any more, anything else that like that? Is my esteemed committee member or anything else that like that?
No, I just, yeah, I'm totally in supportive waiting. I think also because Councilor Derby couldn't be here because of a scheduling conflict with another committee, I think it would be great for him to be able to have an opportunity to weigh in as well.
Absolutely.
Not that it's necessary, but I just think out of fairness, just to hear what he thinks. You know, one thing that I'll just emphasize why I think that's important is Councilor Derby and I in previous times have had temporary disabilities from having surgeries. And to, he may feel differently about that. It may have been incredibly challenging for him when he had his surgery, just like it was for me. So maybe he thinks two fifty is appropriate.
No, and he also has, he's been doing this for a little while, he actually sometimes has some interesting perspectives on this that might be surprising, so I'm curious to hear what he says.
Yep.
I'm concerned about the weigh-in though, but he said he meant the weigh-in, does that mean we all have the weigh-in? Anyhow, so that's enough of that, I'll take a motion to adjourn unless there's any more comments.
So move.
All right, and so we have a motion from Councilor Riley and Councilor Gomez, who's acting in place of Councilor Derby. All in favor? I abstain, no votes. All right, thank you everyone.